All right, thank you so much, everyone, for taking part in tonight's planning board meeting. I will start tonight with the sunshine law, Mr. Hawk, can you take it away, please?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, this meeting is convened in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Means Act of the state of New Jersey. Let the official minutes reflect that adequate notices meeting has been provided by publishing a notice in the official city newspaper. And thereafter posting same on the city bulletin board for such notices and following same with the city clerk. This meeting has also been posted on the city's webpage. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Garrett Ward. Commissioner Garrett Ward is absent. Commissioner Negron.
Here.
Commissioner Negron present. Commissioner Onyani.
Present.
Commissioner Onyani present. Commissioner Hudson. Commissioner Hudson is absent. Commissioner Cipio.
She was there most of the time.
No, she's.
She's present. I couldn't unmute.
Commissioner Hudson is present. Commissioner Cipio. Commissioner Cipio is absent. Commissioner Sinclair, Commissioner Sinclair is absent. Commissioner Gonano.
Yeah, but yeah.
He was present. He just, he just came in, he just signed in. He waiting for his mic to come on.
Yeah. Commissioner Kivutu.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Present.
Commissioner Green is present. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you so much. Um, so we'll get started right now with the memorization of the regular minutes for March sixth, which was last month's meeting. Commissioners that are eligible to vote on this are Commissioners Garrett Ward, Negron, Vice Chair, Onyani, Cipio, and myself. So with that being said, Commissioners, if you haven't, please take a moment to read over the regular minutes of last month's meeting. And when ready, I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes. And do I have a motion? Thank you, Vice Chair, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Onyani, can I have roll call, please?
Commissioners. Commissioner Negron.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonano.
Yes.
Commissioner Onyani.
Yes.
Commissioner Kivutu.
Yes. Right, thank you so much. Alright, so next steps will be the memorization of resolutions. Um, we have our first one, which is PBA dash one zero dash two four dash zero zero four four. And these applicant, the applicant with scooters are us. Um, we denied this application last month. And Mr. Hawk, regarding this application, um, I just wanted to make sure, um, if everything is up to snuff and.
Yeah. Yeah, everything's fine, uh, Chair, Mr. Chairman, and obviously a yes vote on this resolution is a vote to deny the, uh, the application.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Hawk, so with that being said, do I have a motion, uh, for this resolution for PBA dash one zero dash two four dash zero zero four four? And Commissioners that are eligible to vote, my apologies, our Commissioners Negron, Vice Chair, Onyani, and myself. So with that said, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Um, I just, um, confirm, this is, a yes vote is to deny?
Yes, a yes vote would be denied because the, um, resolution is framed as a denial, so if you're voting yes, that's yes on the denial.
That's a yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Bro, can I have a second, please? Is that a Vice Chair?
No.
Okay, uh, so with that said, and just on the record too, I want to announce Commissioner always on the call. Uh, seven thirteen, I was, let's say seven ten, we just want to put it on the record. Alright, so with that being said, uh, can I have roll call for this, uh, resolution for PBA dash one zero dash two four dash zero zero four four?
Commissioner Onyani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonano.
Yes.
Commissioner Kivutu.
Yes. And also Commissioner Groan is eligible to vote.
Commissioner.
Commissioner.
Okay. Commissioner Negron is a yes.
Alright, thank you so much. And the last part of our, uh, memorization of resolutions is PB seven four zero dash two zero. Um, this applicant was approved on, uh, April twenty twenty one. Um, Mr. Hawk, regarding this application right here, I just wanted to get some, your feedback regarding this, since it's been a while.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this was a, uh, application, as you said, was approved in April of twenty twenty one for, whatever reason, it was never posted on the, uh, on the agenda for a memorialization of the vote. Um, it is now, I believe everything's in order and you can proceed to vote on this application, on this resolution.
Alright, thank you so much. Um, just as Commissioners that are eligible to vote on this application are Commissioners Green, Onyani, and myself. So with that said, do I have a motion to approve PB seven four zero dash two zero? Well, I'll make the motion to approve. Um, can I have a second, please?
A second, our motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mayor, um, can I have roll call, please, Justice?
Commissioner Onyani.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Green. Commissioner Kivutu.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Hey, you're a mute there.
Yes, uh, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you so much. Um, alright, so we'll get started on today's agenda, we don't have any calendar of old business, so we'll get to the nitty gritty, which is calendar of new business. Um, before we go to the first scheduled application, I actually just wanted to make a note, just because today we have five cases. Um, I'm making a proposal today to move, uh, cases four and five to a special meeting. Um, just because of the nature of it, but, uh, before I take any thunder away, um, I'll let our board planning, uh, planning, uh, planner just tell us a little bit about it, so that you guys have some context on, uh, why we probably need to push this, these two cases to a special meeting.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, so yeah, I, um, we're looking to, uh, move, uh, carry these, um, these items on the agenda to the, to the sixteenth, um, since they're two separate preliminary investigations, uh, to determine whether, uh, five sites, sorry, well, six sites are going to be, or meet the criteria for, um, a redevelopment area, uh, per the local redevelopment housing law, and, uh, due to the number of sites, these are all, these are scattered sites. Um, and the, you know, we want to give the, the public, uh, sufficient time for, uh, questions and comments. Uh, uh, our office thought it would be a good idea to, uh, just carry these items, uh, just for another two weeks. Uh, if possible, yeah.
Definitely. Uh, Commissioners, if you have any questions for Alex, please, uh, ask them now before I put this into motion, just in case if anybody has, uh, any, uh, needs in terms of, um, getting a better understanding. But again, uh, just because of the nature of tonight, uh, currently we have five cases on the docket. Um, it wouldn't make sense to put these two there, so that's why we're calling for a special meeting, but again, if anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I don't think, I don't have a question, I just need to know what two addresses are we, um, talking about in terms of moving them to another date?
Okay, okay, yeah.
Go ahead, Alex, my fault.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, so, so the, uh, so we have a preliminary investigation for thirty South Arlington. Um, is, uh, just right below the, uh, East Orange train station, this is, uh, block three ninety-one, lot twenty-seven. And then we have a, another, uh, preliminary investigation uh, for forty Madonna Place, one, one twelve Washington Street, and forty-six and fifty East Park Street. Um, I can provide to those.
Hey, Alex, is the one on forty Madonna Place, that's, that's a residential, uh?
Yeah, it's a vacant lot, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's private or, or that's city-owned property?
I have to check my, uh, notes here, I believe that that is city-owned, yeah.
City-owned.
Who is the, who is the recipient?
I'm sorry?
Who is the person that's trying to build on that property?
I don't believe we have a developer for that site.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, the, right now, as it reads, the applicant is actually the city of East Orange. And it's, uh, basically an area of need of investigation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem.
Yeah, the, uh, and, uh, so the other, uh, one twelve Washington Street is also city-owned. Uh, and forty-six and fifty East Park Street are, those are privately owned parcels.
I have a question, Alex, um, I, I mean, I remember, uh, forty Madonna is a vacant lot, uh, how about, um, thirty North Arlington, is that an existing building or is that a vacant lot?
That's an existing building.
Okay, so the only one, every, all the other ones, I know one twelve, forty-six and fifty East Park, are those lots or those, um, buildings also?
Those are lots, those are, yeah, those were improved with single-family homes, yeah.
So those are lots, empty lots?
No, 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 those are, those are developed lots, they have single-family homes on them.
Oh, they have single, okay, thank you.
Hmm, yeah. Houseman always?
Uh, the South Arlington, um, the South Arlington parcel. Um, thirty-one South Arlington, is that the same size, the same side as the library or across the street?
I, it's, I believe it's, um, it's a, it's across the street. Across the street, yeah.
Right.
And, and the app, and the applicant, the applicant for that parcel has already been, has that applicant been designated or?
I don't believe so, though.
No, yeah, the app, yeah, currently the applicant, um, is the city of East Orange.
It's the city of East Orange as well, okay, thank you.
Um, any other questions? Alright, so with that said, Commissioners, again, because of the nature of this case, uh, we just feel that it's, uh, prob, it's more necessary to probably push this to a, a special meeting on the sixteenth. So with that said, uh, I'd like to make a motion to carry, uh, cases PBA dash zero three dash two five dash zero zero one four as well as zero zero one five to a special meeting on, uh, April sixteenth at seven PM, um, so with that said, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Uh, who's the second, I need to see the second, Commissioner Groan?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Groan, so with that said, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner always.
Yes.
Commissioner Onyani.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson. Commissioner Negron.
Yes.
Commissioner Kivutu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonano.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you so much, everybody, so we'll put that, uh, on the calendar, um, for April sixteenth. So, uh, with that said, we'll go ahead and jump back to the first case of, uh, tonight's meeting, which is a PBA dash zero, um, dash one one dash two four dash zero zero five zero, and the applicant is Big Goods LLC, um, property address four eighty-four Main Street. And counsel, Mr. Primo, Primali.
It's, uh, Piero Mali, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me okay?
My apologies for butchering, yes, I can hear you okay.
Not a problem.
Um, you can go ahead and proceed, uh, if, uh, all your witnesses are here.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, my witnesses are here, but they are listed as attendees right now, I don't know if we need to bring them over as panelists. We have a, a Joe Watson, a Novella Dickens, and also our project architect is a Rui Amaral.
Okay, so you said Joe Watson, Rui, and Novella Dickens?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, Rhonda, if you can, can you please bring them over to panelists?
Okay, one second. And Chairman, they're being identified as who, I'm sorry?
Uh, Joe, Joe Watson, Novella Dickens, and you've already brought in the architect, Rui Amaral.
Uh, Dickens, 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 okay, oh, okay, Novella Dickens, okay. Alright, Novell Dickens is the.
Applicant, and Joe Watson is the co-applicant, correct, they are the principals of the applicant entity, Big Goods LLC.
Okay. Uh, Rui Amari.
He is the architect for the project.
Got you, thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Uh, Rh- Rhonda, do we lose a Commissioner? I thought Commissioner Hudson was here, but I don't see her now.
Yeah.
I, I'm looking too, I'm just saw, I heard the chime.
Possibly she might have, uh, some technical difficulties, just want to make sure we step one, two, three, four, five, we still have quorum now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so, um, when she gets back, she'll get back, but as long as we have a quorum, we should be fine. Um, counsel, you could go ahead and proceed, um, with your witnesses, as you please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, we just have, uh, Joe Watson, so Watson still needs to be brought over, but I do have, uh, Novella Dickens and, uh, Mr. Amaral as well, but I will get started. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Michael Pieramali, law firms Gasio and Pamaco, one ball and drive, suite one oh two West Orange, New Jersey, appearing tonight on behalf of applicant entity, baked goods LLC, and its principals, Joe Watson and Novella Dickens. The applicant is before the board tonight requesting minor site plan approval in order to renovate the first floor of an existing three-story commercial building for cannabis retail use. The subject property is located at four eighty-four Main, uh, Street, otherwise known as block five four zero point zero one, lots sixteen and seventeen on the tax maps of the city of East Orange. Subject property is comprised of two separate tax lots with lot sixteen being improved with the three-story frame building. And we propose three parking spaces and a loading space in the rear. Uh, lot seventeen is vacant lot, uh, to the east and will be used to access the parking and the loading spaces in the rear of the existing building on lot sixteen. Both lot sixteen and seventeen are not undersized for the zone, and a lot consolidation is not being proposed as part of this application. The present applicant is a tenant, and their lease agreement covers both the use of the first floor of the existing commercial building on lot sixteen. The parking and loading spaces to the rear of that building also on lot sixteen. And lot to the east, which is lot seventeen. The property owner is a business entity known as four eighty-four Main Grove LLC, and its individual owner. My apologies. Sorry. The property owner is a business entity known as four eight four Main Grove LLC, and its individual owner Joanna C. has authorized the filing of the present application. In support of this application tonight, I intend to call three witnesses. First, I intend to call the applicants, Joe Watson and Novella Dickens, to confirm their lease and the terms of the lease for the use of the property, the current condition of the property, and the renovations and use proposed should this present application be approved. Then I intend to call our project architect, Rui Amaral, to discuss the plans he prepared for the proposed improvements, as well as the ingress and egress for the site. Uh, so with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to call, uh, both principals of the applicant entity, uh, Mr. Joe Watson and Novella Dickens, uh, they both like to testify together. And I have no problem with that, I just ask if you'd like to swear them in together just for your convenience.
Uh, we'll swear both witnesses in together, uh, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Hawk.
Witnesses, if you can raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If, if you can each, uh, state your name, starting with Mr. Watson, and just, uh, state your name and spell your last name for the record, please.
Joe Watson, W A T S O N.
And the other witness is Novella Dickens.
That is correct.
Okay, if you can just, uh, repeat your name and spell your last name for the record.
Novella Dickens, last name Deeson David I C K E N S.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, may I begin?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Dickens, what is your position with the applicant entity, baked goods LLC?
I am co-owner, and I'm fifty-one percent of the ownership of baked goods.
Thank you, and Mr. Watson, what is your position with the entity?
I am co-owner, and I'm forty-nine percent ownership.
Thank you very much, as I understand, uh, the questions I will pose will be to Ms. Dickens, and if Ms. Dickens, you determine that Joe is a better uh, candidate to answer the question, you'll let us know, is that correct?
That is correct, thank you.
Great, Ms. Dickens, uh, has the entity baked goods LLC entered into a lease for the use of the first floor of the existing building and the vacant parking lot to the east?
Yes, we have.
And how long is the term of that lease?
The lease is for five years.
Now, after that initial term, do you have the option to extend incorporated into the lease?
Yes, we have the approval of the owner.
Thank you, and should the present application be approved generally, how do you intend to use the property?
The property will be used as a micro-business for cannabis, for the first floor only. At this time, there is no delivery or lounge for the services that we will provide.
And have you obtained the necessary New Jersey state license for cannabis retail sales at this location from the Cannabis Regulatory Commission?
Yes, we received that approval as of the twenty-fifth of March, our next steps is to receive approval from the planning board, and then we will move forward with the, um, the code of occupancy from the city.
Hopefully, uh, we can, we can move that along tonight, hopefully, fingers crossed.
That is our hope, thank you.
Ms. Dickens, what are the proposed hours of operation for this, uh, cannabis retail, uh, business?
For our hours, Sunday is to be determined, we do realize for various reasons that we would, we're planning to delay the opening on Sundays, but Monday through Thursday, ten AM to nine PM, and Friday and Saturday, ten AM to ten PM.
Now, I understand Sunday, the, uh, the hours are not set in stone at this point in time, but if you were to guess for the sake of the board, um, giving the widest latitude to those hours, what hours would you propose for Sunday?
I will propose twelve PM to six PM.
Thank you very much. These hours of operation, to your knowledge, are consistent with the East Orange cannabis ordinance?
Yes, they are.
Uh, Ms. Dickens, what security measures are proposed for, for the cannabis retail use?
I'm going to ask my partner, Joe Watson, to confirm the information for security, please.
Uh, as of right now, we've had six cameras installed by ADT, along with, uh, glass break, motion detectors, and, uh, 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 cameras in the front entrance, the back entrance, uh, cameras at, in the proposed lobby, uh, the ma, the main, um, room and the vault area.
Thank you, Mr. Watson, and Mr. Watson, just one, uh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Also, uh, our, our security will be handled through extra-duty solutions, which is the off-duty, uh, East Orange police officers. Um, so they will handle our, our, ours, there will be our security guards.
Thank you very much, Mr. Watson. Uh, so my next question is, with regard to the use of the vacant parking lot to the east, uh, would you tell me what the proposed use is for that vacant parking lot to the east, and is that existing rolling gate to remain?
Joe, would you like to answer that?
Uh, the, the parking lot will be used to enter for, uh, where we, will, our employees will enter, and the, uh, and our delivery trucks will enter, right, the, right now, the gate isn't rolling, it's swinging, um, but it would be locked during, during the day, you know, and we'll open it, you know, part, when our deliveries come.
So your testimony is that the, the intention is to leave that gate closed for, for the majority of the time, and only open it when one of your employees is entering to park or exiting uh, from their parking space, or when deliveries are occurring, is that correct?
That is correct.
And do you, that, that'll provide additional security for your, for your cannabis retail use?
That's correct.
Thank you. Uh, at the request of the board engineer after we had our technical review meeting, uh, you engaged an engineer to prepare a lighting plan that was submitted in support of the application, correct?
That is correct.
Now, in the rear of the parking lot, there appear to be some areas where the illumination is less than one foot candle. Uh, should this application be approved, uh, and the board were to see fit to make a condition that you bring the lighting level up to one foot candle, uh, would you be willing to accept that condition and revise the lighting plan accordingly?
Yes, we are.
Um, in addition, the board engineer and planner have noted in their review letters that the building and the vacant parking lot to the east are separate tax lots. Uh, I understand that you're only renting the space pursuant to a lease, but to your knowledge, is there any intent on the part of the property owner to consolidate or combine those two tax lots?
No, as per the, the owner, she has had that property for over forty-four years in the city of East Orange, so she does not want to make that change, just in case anything happens, she doesn't want to have a lot of things to convert back, so she is strongly stating she wants to keep it as is.
So we understand that. Uh, Ms. Dickens, how will the refuse be handled at this site, and what type of refuse is expected?
The refuge, if approved by the city, will be handled according to the current schedule for disposal. At this time, there will be no product that will be exposed, the only thing that will need to, to be disposed of is cardboard, paper, and of course, any trash that is used in the break room or the lunchroom by myself and my partner, or any of our employees, no product will ever be disposed.
And it is my understanding of, from handling similar applications, that the state actually strictly regulates the return of any unused product, which goes back to the manufacturer, is that correct?
That is correct.
And lastly, Ms. Dickens, with regard to the proposed signage, why are we proposing the wall sign as opposed to an awning sign that would be similar to a neighboring property?
I'm going to have that last question to my partner, Joe Watson.
As you know, uh, many, um, landlords didn't want to rent to cannabis businesses. Uh, one of the agreements that we made with, uh, the owner of the businesses is that we wouldn't change too much of, of her, uh, store, so that, you know, and if, in case the business didn't, didn't take off like we, we feel it would, it wouldn't be a lot for her to change back to, to be able to rent it to the next person. Now, out front, there is our, an, uh, an, an existing light box, so it just made, for, for one thing, it made sense, because we, we could just use the existing light box, we talked to fast signs, and they would say we could just use the existing light box was there, which wouldn't cause us, which we would have to make too much change to the front of the building. And then, the other thing that came into play is that the CRC requires to see the front of the building, who's coming into the store. If we, if we had, if we had the awning, from talking to fast sign, because we have the gate, it would need to cover that gate. And the gate covers just about the whole front of the building, so it would be a, a very large awning, and it would, it would block, uh, the view, and if like, God forbid, if, if someone did try to, to, uh, rob us or anything like that, you would never be able to catch the car, the car plate, because your, your options would be, put the camera under the awning, which you would not be able to see, see the street at all, or, or above the awning, which you would not be able to see the people entering the building, so that just seemed like the, the, the best thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have no further affirmative questions of either of these witnesses, I turn them over to the board, uh, words experts and members of the public.
Definitely, thank you so much. Uh, Commissioners, are there any questions for Ms. Dickens or Mr. Watson in regards to their testimony?
Um, I, I do, Chairman.
Go ahead.
On the plans, um, uh, you know, I was, um, grappling with this all day with, with regards to your, um, operating hours. And so you stated, um, um, different hours that were on the propos, the project proposal description. Um, so are you saying that your hours are, can you restate that, because I can, um, on, 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 on a, on a description, you're saying from ten AM to ten PM, and then from Thursday to Saturday, ten AM to twelve o'clock midnight? And I thought that that was, um, I heard differently, I, I, what I heard, I like, but what I see on this description, I really, uh, don't, don't like, so can you, again, um, confirm your operating hours, please?
Yes, just as you indicated as well, just for the safety of all that's involved, customers, employees, and owners, we did look at the hours of operation. With that being said, the hours that I quoted a moment ago when the question was proposed. With that being said, the hours that I quoted a moment ago when the question was proposed, was a tentative for Sunday, but with, when asked, what would be a tentative hour would be twelve PM to six PM. Monday through Thursday, nine AM, I'm sorry, ten AM to nine PM. Friday through Saturday, ten AM to ten PM. We just think that those hours are more doable for all that are involved.
On, on the plans, the reason why they are different on the plans, those are the specific hours from the ordinance. Those are the hours we were allowed to be open. So we, we, and we hadn't exactly established at that time what I, what we felt like good, good hours would be. And so, you know, we've had times since we initially filed the plans to, to basically, uh, rethink that and, and compare with other dispensaries in there.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Since, since there's a disparity between the plans and what your testimony is, can we just make that as a condition that those would be the hours?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, can I just ask a question? I just want to kind of piggyback, um, off just to, in terms of the security, I wasn't clear on, if I may, if this is right, um.
Um, I had question, I had, uh, coun- councilman always hand up first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, no worries. We'll get to you right after this question.
Uh, thank you for that. Thank you for that, Chairman. Actually, Mayor, uh, Mayor Commissioner, this might be all aligned. I do want to confirm in terms of the security, my questions for the security too. I do want to confirm that the security plan laid out and that just testified to is aligned with what's laid out in our ordinance.
Yes, the, the, the security plan is the same security plan we submitted, uh, to the council and extra duty solutions. Uh, we spoke at the council, represents the off-duty police, East Orange police officers that we would be using as security. And that is, is again, within the, the ordinance.
So it, it does, you want to make sure that there will be an armed security guard there during the hours of operation as we laid out in our.
Definitely.
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, you go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I, my, my question was similar to that because I know that a few weeks ago, when I spoke to the chief, that I didn't know that our East Orange police officers can be, uh, security guards for anything has to do with the cannabis. So I'm kind of, you know, if that's what it is, then I, because when you said it, I know just about three or four weeks ago, I had a conversation with the chief about another, um, uh, uh, dispensary, and she distinctly told me that they don't allow our East Orange police officers to do security at the dispensary. So I was kind of like wondering, did that change? That's all.
Oh, well, if this is, when I reached out to them and they sent me the application, I clearly told them what it, what it was, but again, this was be- in the beginning of our process when we were bef- before the, uh, before the, the council. So if that has changed, they have, they haven't made me aware, aware of the change, but I will follow up with that.
Yeah, follow up with that because I don't want you to get too deep into the swimming pool. And then they come up with, you know, so that way you'll have your plan together with, uh, a company. But I know for a fact, last week I was engaging in a conversation, um, with the chief and the director. And they actually told me that our police officers, they don't authorize it. That's what they said. We don't really recommend it or we authorize it. It was have to be authorized. So just check into it.
We will. Thank you so much for the information, Mayor.
Uh, Mister Hock, do you want to put that into a condition, um, just to, you know, cover ourselves?
Yeah, I, I, I think, uh, that will be a condition that the applicant will confirm that they could use East Orange, uh, police officers or not.
Yeah, Chairman, if I, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah, and so Mayor, yeah, I think definitely maybe, you know, offline, definitely have a conversation because I think that was one of the things that was laid out in the ordinance, uh, requested from, you know, they, I think there was something to the extent where, um, they wanted, uh, you know, our officers to at least have first dibs. Uh, so I'm not sure.
I, I don't mind. I'm just saying, I don't want the applicant to get so far. Just make sure that it's right. Cause you know, I, I heard something different last week. There's no
Yeah.
takeaway from what they're doing. We just don't want the applicant to get so far, then we pop up and say, oh yeah, that wasn't changed. I'll look into it again also tomorrow. And, uh, just making sure that, uh, that if it's, if it's good, it's good. If it's not, then making sure the applicant, uh, can go in a different direction and make sure they have the proper security. That's it. And ain't no big thing in there.
No, I, I, yeah, I agree with you, Mayor. I, I don't know, Chairman, for the, you know, the commission, you know, to the, the board themselves, I'm not sure what the implications of that, um, of putting it in, in that condition in, in particular, if it's a, uh, you know, discrepancy, you know, that happens, you know, in-house. Um, you know, I'm not sure how we want to handle that. If you want to put that condition in and then come to find out. I, I don't know if you understand what I'm saying.
Well, no, I understand what you're saying. Yeah, I'm more so just want to make sure that we cover ourselves too, just because we don't want to just give, you know, kind of like, uh, uh, you know, just say, well, you figure it out. Just want to make sure that everybody's aligned so that, um, if this is something that we can, that, that they, we can facilitate, then we can facilitate. If it's not something that we could, we can't facilitate, at least we're all aligned.
I, I think the condition will be something along the lines of that they, the applicant, uh, will have armed security, uh, and will, um, confirm whether those armed security may be East Orange police officers or not. And then, you know, the, they'll agree to the armed security. They just have to confirm whether or not they can use the East Orange PD for that purpose.
They can verify. Got you. Thank you, Council.
Yeah, that's fair. Um, to the applicants, is that fair for? For you guys?
Yes. Thank you so much for confirming. Yes.
No problem. Okay, um. Are there any more questions for Mister Watson or Ms. Dickinson?
Dickens. That's okay.
My apologies.
That's okay.
All right. Hearing none. Uh, Council, you can proceed with the next witness.
And, Mister Chairman, I'd like to call the project architect, Rui Amaral.
Mister Amaral, if you can raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this board is truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you can just repeat your name and spell your last name for the record, please.
Rui, R U I, last name Amaral, A M A R A L. I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey and I have testified in front of this board.
Thank you.
And Mister Amaral, I, I, I've seen you on this board, um, throughout my time being here. I just want to make sure your licenses are in good standing still?
Yes, it is.
Okay, um, so with that said, I'll, I'll go ahead and confirm Mister Amaral and his credentials. Uh, Council, you can proceed.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
I just want to put on the record, uh, Councilwoman Garrett Ward is in the meeting. She's been here for a while. I would say like maybe seven forty. So I just want to put that on the record. Um, Council, you go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, Mister Amaral, will you retain to prepare the plans for the, uh, interior renovations proposed?
Yes, I will.
Would you take a moment to describe what presently exists at the subject property?
Inside the building or outside?
No, just outside.
Outside. Well, the, um, the building is a, uh, three-story building. Um, it's a wood frame and on the ground floor is originally was designed as a commercial space. So it's basically a store or, or whatever, commercial. Uh, second and third floors, um, I think originally these were apartments, but currently they're vacant.
I understand. Uh, and would you please go through your plans for the proposed use? Are you able to share your screen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Visible, right?
Not yet.
No?
Not yet.
I haven't seen it yet.
Now?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Uh, Council, I, I know this was part of your application, but if we're going to put it on the screen, I'd like to mark it. So call as A1. And if the witness can just identify what this is.
This is the, the sheet, sheet number one. It shows the, uh, basically the, uh, the plot plan of the property.
What's the date on the sheet, the latest revision date, Rui?
This thing is in my way here. Let me see if I can move it. All right. The latest version is three eighteen twenty-five. Revised date. Let me see if I can either pull this up.
That acceptable, Mister Hock?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Rui. Please, go ahead.
So basically the property, this, these are two lots, um, lot sixteen and seventeen. We are dealing with a lot on the left side, which is lot sixteen. Um, it shows the, the present building, a three-story frame building, four eighty-four. Um, the, the building itself basically occupies practically the entire width of the building, of the property, sorry. Um, it's two feet, two on one side and a quarter of a foot on, on the, on the right side. Um, in the building, we have, I'm showing three parking spaces, one ADA and a loading space, um, as it was required on commercial properties. Um, the access to the parking lot or is through, through the lot on the right side, the vacant lot. Currently, it's, is paved, um, it's, I guess, used previously as parking for this building. Um, and there's currently, there's two parking spaces in the back of the building. But it's, they're not marked, they're just, they just parked back there. Uh, where you could see that the, the, the sub, the lines that they tried to do. Um, so that's, that's the outside of the building. Um, let's see if I pull up the second sheet.
Now, we're going to mark this as well. Uh, Rui, would you, this is going to be marked A2, the exhibit will be A2.
A2.
And, uh, sheet, and what's the revised date on this as well?
I'm sorry, that is, yeah, let me see if I, oh, wait, this, okay, I can see it now. All right, three, um, sorry, uh, February thirteen twenty-five.
Thank you. Please continue. Sorry to interrupt.
So this is sheet A2, um, it basics, basically shows the, um, the floor plans. Um, existing basement, we're not doing anything to it. It stays as storage vacant. Uh, vacant basement. Um, there's a rear door that goes from the outside into the basement. Um, there's some mechanical, uh, units down, done in the basement. Um, on the main floor, um, this is existing. We have two, two doors, one that goes onto the retail store. And on the left side, we have a, a door that goes, that leads to the stair, to the top of, of floors or apartments or, or spaces.
And just to confirm, there are no renovations or use proposed for the second and third floors. They will remain vacant should this application be approved?
Correct. So we are, all we are doing is renovating the, the ground floor, um, which is, um, as a door to a lobby. Uh, we, we're creating this lobby. So before you access the, the, the retail section, um, there's like a holding area outside, um, so which is a lobby or waiting area, let's say. Um, as a door that leads to the inside and, and the window that you can notify, um, the, the operators, uh, you know, somebody is, would like to, to, uh, access the retail area. Um, on the retail section, um, it's basically a space that's eleven feet by eighteen, eighteen feet eight. Um, has several counters, uh, cash register. And that's just about it. And then, and then at the back, there's a, this staircase which is existing that leads to a rear area or basically a storage area. And within the storage area, we have on the, on the left side, two garbage can, uh, bins. Um, that's where the, the, the refuge will be, will be, uh, held. And we are providing a six by six fenced-in area. So when they get deliveries, this becomes like a storage, but, but the, the product is not basically on the open. It's basically like a, a, a holding area. Um, so this is a fenced area and I, I would assume that the door is a locked door that's kept locked. And then, uh, on the left, we have, uh, an existing bathroom and an additional just storage, uh, unsecured area for storage and possibly a desk and that, that will be the office for the, for the, for the, um, the store. Uh, from the back, there is an existing staircase that leads into the entrance of the building. Has a door into our, into our retail store and there's a staircase that goes up to the, uh, to the apartment. Now, the floor plans are showing now is basically the upstairs, the two floors. Has two large rooms in the front, um. This was supposed to be, I guess, a, a living room at one time as a fireplace. Um, there's another room, um, and then in the back, there's additional two rooms. So it's basically as four, four rooms per, per floor, but these, no work is being done to it. And the idea is to keep it as vacant store. Um, on top, I'm showing this, several pictures of the property. Um, the one on the right is the driveway that leads to the back. It has two doors, two swinging doors. Um, the building from the street, the different views. Um, as it was mentioned about the sign area, this building, when it was designed, had a sign area, which is this light box that he's talking about. So within the, the facade, it already has a sign area, um, that was well designed, you know, so it works very well to just use it and place the sign there. The other, the other drawings that we have is basically that the lighting, lighting, but that's it. That's not it yet.
Let's mark it as well. If we're showing it, let's mark it. It is A3. Call it a lighting plan?
Yeah.
Just give us the date on it?
Two, three, twenty-five, so February three.
Thank you. And then, and just to confirm, the lighting that's on this plan is new proposed lighting, correct? This is not existing. This is, these are going to be installed should this application be approved, correct?
Correct. It basically shows one light in the back, which is, I guess, they've been asked to add an, maybe possibly an, an additional light fixture, uh, hung on the building. There is an existing now over the, over the porch entrance, which would be replaced. There's two light fixtures on the side of the building, which lights up the driveway. And then one by the front door, uh, which basically lights the, the entrance. There is an existing light pole also in front of the building. So, so it's well lit up.
Thank you, Mister Amaral. Uh, anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think that's all I have to say, I guess.
Thank you. Mister Chairman, I have no further questions of this witness. I turn him over to the board and the board's experts and any members of the public.
Definitely. Thank you so much, Council. Uh, Commissioners, are there any questions for Mister Amaral and his testimony tonight?
Uh, yes, I have a, a question, uh, Chairman.
Go ahead.
All right, um, the roll-down gates, are you guys changing those roll-down gates?
I don't believe so. They, they work. Um, they probably, probably need a little bit of oil, or oil.
Yeah, they need some repairs. You definitely need some repairs. You might need to, to re, uh, place them. The also, also the exterior of the building, uh, it's in pretty bad shape. Uh, uh, are there any, um, um, you know, anything's going to be done to the exterior? you know, anything's gonna be done to the exterior of the building?
I'm not, well, my client did, we didn't, did not address that, so I'm not.
Yeah, cuz you, yeah, I, I know that you're not going to, you're not going to use the apartments upstairs. Are they gonna be closed off to any, any traffic at all? From the tenants that are renting the space downstairs, are they gonna have access to the building, you know, upstairs, the apartments upstairs?
Mr. Chairman, we have, uh, we have Joe Watson, he's raising his hand as the applicant, I think he, he's better suited to answer this question if that's acceptable.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Uh, I'll address the gate first, we are, we are gonna have the gate serviced, and we've, within a year, if the landlord agrees, we're, we are going to replace the gate, because we, we kinda want a different style, one that would, would again, just since we only have the first floor, would, would better protect just the first floor, as you can see now, it covers both, both, both areas, so if she ever was to rent the upper, uppers, upstairs, we would have to open the gate for that, so, but as, as it stands now, we, we're gonna, we're gonna have them serviced, and, and, and we're also going to paint them, so, and the landlord has also made improvements on, on the front of, on the front of the building as well, since, since these pictures were taken. As far as the upstairs, no, the customers will not have access to, to the upstairs. If at any given time, you know, she decides she maybe wanna rent that or anything, then we would, we would, we would have that discussion, but we're actually considering renting the whole building to ensure that we have complete control over, over everything.
Yeah, I, I will be concerned if she was going to rent those, those spaces upstairs with a cannabis business in, on the lower ground, so that would be my concern. But from a code enforcement side and from just visual, it doesn't look good, the building, and I will be addressing those issues with the owner from the code enforcement side. Because the aluminum siding is definitely not up to par, and, and the gates, you have two gates there. They're rusted and they're, they do meet the, the code as, as it relates to having, you know, looking into the property, so. But yeah, the, the, the building definitely needs some, some, you know, TLC.
Yes, we're planning to paint, that is, that is on our list of to-dos, the, the gate that you're referring to, we're gonna scrape it down and paint that as well.
Oh, cool, and, and, you know, you're, you're, you're thinking about, about, you know, occupancy of the sec, you know, the second and third floor while you have the business down there, would probably a concern for you as well as the city.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Councilman Olway.
Uh, thank you, Chairman, to directing the grounds point on both of those points with the gates and as well as occupancy on the second floor, I do think that's addressed in the ordinance. So if there was any time that there's gonna be any residential occupation over in those apartments, if I, you know, if I, if I'm not, you know, if I stand correct, I'm pretty sure we addressed it in the ordinance, and they will, at that point, won't be in compliance, and if it's not, we will address it in the ordinance. And then with the gates itself too, I will, you know, offer to the applicant, and maybe impart that to, to the landlord, to the owner. And Director, you can correct me if I'm wrong too, and, you know, Mayor Commissioner is on the line as well. I know that we're in a commercial corridors, I think we're trying to do away with the pull-down steel gates as well. As a facade thing, so, you know, I would, I would just impart to the applicants to keep that in mind too. If, cuz that's gonna probably be addressed in code soon enough if it hasn't yet as well. So I know that as a city, we're doing away from those roll-down prison, you know, gates. You know, we're trying to, so I just wanted to impart that to the applicant as well.
And, and I'll look into that too, Councilman, because it isn't a redevelopment area, is that correct, Alex?
Yes, it's in the TVD, Transaville District.
And then the other thing too, Mr. Watson, you wanna, you wanna keep in mind, because if you, if the, if the landlord tends to put tenants up there, then the parking issue becomes an issue for us, because as it stands, I don't see, you know, the, the cannabis business is gonna draw a lot of people, a lot of traffic, and I know that you have ten employees according to the description. And I don't see ten employees parking, you only have three spaces back there, which means there's gonna be on-street parking, and, and definitely during the day, I, I believe there's no parking, you have, you know, limited parking, and maybe one of, because it's a commercial area, so you wanna take a look at that, but definitely that parking with residents on the second floor, and I, you know, have some reservations as it is, with just ten employees and the business with no parking.
There are nine parking spaces in the front, nine-meter parking spaces.
Yeah, that's city, that's city parking, that's not, you know, designated for the business or the residents.
I, I don't believe the Commissioner that they are required to provide parking on-site, especially since they're not making any changes to the, the structure, so I don't think there is an issue there, I think the, there, there is a general provision about removal of spaces.
I know, I, 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 I understand, Alex, no, that's why I asked that, that question. The parking is gonna be in terms of, you know, the customers coming in, you know, where they're gonna park, they're gonna be rounding the city or parking, so I'm, I'm talking on aspects of it. But if you, if you put residents on the second floor, then it, then it becomes an issue.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Watson, Chairman.
No problem, thank you so much. Commissioner, is there any other questions for the architect and his testimony? All right, hearing done. Council, you can proceed if you have another witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I do not, I, my affirmative case is concluded. Just like the opportunity to say a few brief words in support of the application before vote.
Uh, well, we'll get your summation in a second, first we'll bring it to the public. And then we'll then have our board consultants come on, so. Rhonda, if you can, can you just open it up to the public real quick?
Okay, if, if anyone, we have two attendees there, if any of you have any questions you would like to share with our professionals, you may use raise hand notification, I'll bring you over. I'll just give a moment for someone to respond. Okay, let it be stated on the record that I do not see anyone who wants to, at, to, at this time, make any inquiries to our analysts.
Thank you so much. So we'll go to our board consultants, we'll start with our board engineer, Stephen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Steve Hoyt from Pinoni, I'm filling in for Difty tonight, so it's good to see everybody. Had probably, I'll call it two and a half questions for the applicant, and then one or two questions for the board attorney. A general question, I saw in the, the architectural plan, there's a comment about HVAC systems and the carbon filters to deal with odors from the building. Can somebody from the applicant's team just kind of address that on the record?
Uh, well, there is a, a need for that, because we're not, we don't have a lounge or, or anything, I think that was just part of the ordinance that, that the architect included in, into that. We, our, our lot product is completely sealed as per the CRC, so there's no odor or anything like that.
Thank you. I think I heard the testimony for the parking area at the back with the, the existing gate, the idea is that's closed essentially except for employees, so that's employee parking? Is that accurate?
Yes, employee parking and deliveries only.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please kind of shift to the, the board attorney side of this now. With that said, and the, the potential for any future tenants of that building, is it a, a condition item to raise that that's limited to employee parking only?
You know, the, the only condition that I was going to place on this was that there would be no customer access to the upper floors, I don't think we can condition the approval on the other, the upper floors not being occupied by, and if the owner wants to rent them, I don't think we can do that, we can certainly restrict for the applicant, that no customers would have access to the upper floors, this way people aren't wandering up there, but you know, the owner, they're not the owner of the building, right, so we can't condition the approval on that, you know, no, no, no renting to the upper floors. I mean, I guess the hope is that there's not gonna be residential space up there, but, you know, that's something I don't think we can restrict at this level.
I agree with the, the use of the floors, we can put a condition on the parking though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, but if the testimony was, that's employee only, that's, that's the condition, I think essentially.
Yeah. In, in, we, parking and deliveries only, was the testimony.
And delivery, right.
Gotcha, sorry, I missed delivery, that's fair. To that end, with the testimony regarding the lot consolidation, is it fair to require easement access through that neighboring lot to make sure that people can get to that parking area? My concern is if it stays a separate lot eventually, something could be built there and then the access goes away.
No, you're right, I, I, I think we can place a condition that there's some sort of easement for access purposes.
Okay, that would be my recommendation if the applicant's open to it to ensure that that access remains.
We, we actually have that written into our lease that the access remains for the time of our lease.
That's in your lease?
Yes.
And we, we are willing to submit a copy of that lease.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna suggest that, thank you, Council. If you can submit a copy of the lease to the board, please, for review.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, aside from that, I just wanted to make sure the applicant had no other issues complying with the comments that were in the review letters. I, I think the big ones got checked off, one of them was turning templates for that back area, just to make sure that's all accessible. But just a general, is everything else all right, my question?
Yes.
All right, I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Stephen. So we'll go to our next board consultant, Alex, to take it away.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So I just kinda wanna start off by piggybacking off of Stephen's comment about the odor mitigation, so I just, just taking, took another look at our, our municipal code, and so for, yeah, for chapter, section six of chapter one sixty, subsection B one, it indicates that all cannabis businesses shall adhere to the city regulations regarding odor and have the equipment to mitigate cannabis-related odor in accordance with the Clean Air Act, buildings and vehicles shall be equipped with ventilation systems with carbon filters sufficient in type and capacity, and capacity to eliminate cannabis odors emanating from their interior, so I just wanted, just to confirm one more time, the, the system that's in place, for, I guess maybe the architect could speak to that?
Can you repeat that again, sorry?
So yeah, I was just pointing, referring the board to section one twenty-six of the municipal code, that speaks to the need for ventilation systems with carbon filters sufficient in type and capacity to eliminate cannabis odors emanating from the, their interior, so. Is there, is that made clear in, in the plans, I, I'm not sure if I, I caught that when you were?
I'm not necessarily showing it on the plans, I think that was noted on the plan, on my plans.
Okay.
But that, that would be addressed as, when we submit for permits.
Okay.
Again, I just wanna reiterate, as part of New Jersey law, we can't, we can't get any opened cannabis, and we aren't allowed to open any cannabis, customers cannot even touch cannabis, so we would not have any odors emanating from there, because we can't, we can't, the cannabis has to come still. If the cannabis is unsealed, it has to be returned to, to the, to the, to the manufacturer. We're not allowed to sell, to sell any cannabis that, that can be opened. Now, if we had a lounge, that would be a different thing, but we, we don't have.
Yeah, understood, yeah, I, I, I totally understand that, and it, it makes sense that it's, you know, certainly if it's sealed before it gets to the, the site, then, yeah, I, I can't see how there would be the possibility of an, an odor issue. I guess, I don't know if Stephen can speak to that, but, so the parking, yes, I don't know if the board attorney, if you, you know, to Stephen's point about the access, you know, the lot seventeen is sold, you know, obviously that the lease is doesn't really, it's, it's, it doesn't really hold much water in that situation, correct?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a good point, Alex, you know, notwithstanding the provision in the lease that provides for the access, the owner could still sell that lot, and then the new person that owns that piece will, you know, doesn't have to provide the access, so I think we need to have a condition, as a condition, that if that lot is sold, that.
The applicant must return back to the board, Mr. Hart?
Must return back to the board for purposes of, of, of demonstrating what the access would be at that point.
Yeah, the, the applicant would accept that condition.
Yeah. All right, and then the other thing is the, and I know the Mr. Piramali had indicated, you, you are speaking with your clients about the sign, the I, I don't think I was seeing it in the the plans, the, on the, the elevation, where, I, I, cuz I know so there is, I, I didn't see the building address in the front of the, of the building, is that?
It's shown on sheets, on sheet A one, on the front, the front sheet, the press sheet.
Mr. Amaral, is the, the building address, is the numeral building address on the sign, I think that's what Mr. McLean is asking about?
No. I just placed baked goods.
I understand that, that's part of the ordinance, correct, that the, the building number be included on the sign, is that correct, Mr. McLean?
Yeah, yeah, it's just, and there was a, it said, there's a note about style and, you know, that I included in my report, so it's, I think it's important, I don't know, maybe if, I think that, that, that might be more of the, the land, the landlord's issue than it is anything than the, the tenant, so.
Yeah, it has to be visible from the street. Definitely.
Okay.
We, we can certainly revise the sign to include the street address. The numeric street address.
All right, and I think that's it for my end.
All right, thank you so much, Alex, Commissioner, is there any, any questions for Alex and his testimony? Okay, hearing done, Council, you can go ahead with your summation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would like to say a few brief final words in support of this application. As you've heard tonight, the applicant is before the board seeking minor site plan approval in order to renovate the first floor of an existing three-story commercial building for cannabis micro-business retail use. As you've heard, testimony from the applicant's representatives, Joe Watson and Novella Dickens, as well as project architect Rui Amaral, regarding the design and the proposed operation of the cannabis dispensary. Further, the proposed cannabis dispensary is a permitted use in the CBD zone. Does not require any additional parking, although we are providing some additional parking and a loading zone. In addition, a safe location for deliveries to occur. This use will fully comply with the recommendations of the board, the conditions as stated by the board attorney, and will operate, the applicants will operate this facility in full compliance with all state and local laws. On the basis of the testimony and plans presented, I believe sufficient proofs have been provided to this board to justify granting the minor site plan approval requested, and I respectfully ask to justify granting the minor site plan approval requested, and I respectfully ask that the board approve the present application. I thank the board very much for its time.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, commissioners, are there any questions or comments amongst us before we put this into motion? Yes, councilman Alway?
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to take the opportunity just to, you know, to speak to the applicants, um, you know, Ms., uh, Ms. Dickens and Mr. Watson and, um, as always, given the opportunity, want to commend them for their fortitude. This, uh, just for context, on the other side, um, these, and these two individuals, these, the principals were actually the first applicant that we had for, um, as we rolled out, um, you know, cannabis and, you know, with all the hurdles and so on and so forth. So this is years in the making. So I just wanted to commend them for their diligence and their fortitude and, uh, looks like, you know, he might hopefully round in the corner. So I just wanted to take the opportunity on the record to commend them and, um, you know, just wish them well. Um, and, and, and I, I for one appreciate again just the commitment and, and, and the dedication that they have and the fortitude that they have with all the hardships that they, they've gone through.
Thank you, Councilman Alway. As always, we appreciate your kind words.
Thank you so much, Councilman Alway. Uh, councilwoman?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, just a quick question, um, regarding the uh, units that are upstairs, did I hear correctly that, um, I heard two things that you were, uh, the owners were contemplating on renting out that space? Or the landlord may rent out that space. Uh, I just need clarification on that because it, I'm just thinking of the security plan, um, how that would have to be modified or possibly be modified if the landlord were to rent out that space. Um, I'm just wondering if that would, you know, affect the security plan that you all have.
For clarity, the first portion of what you heard, Councilman Ward, was correct. We are in the midst of communication with the owner for us to lease that out to prevent all of the concerns that were presented in this meeting today and for the security of ourselves as owners and also for our employees. But the owner has not indicated in any form or fashion that she wants to rent that out. It's been empty for a long time and she's trusting us with it and we're hoping the trust will go to the next step for allowing us to rent out the top to avoid the concerns that may rise.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Uh, commissioners, any other questions or comments amongst us? All right, hearing done. Uh, Mr. Hock, can you, I know we have quite a bit of conditions, so I just want to get some clarity before putting this into motion. Can you kind of read them all for us?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. So first condition I have is that the hours of operation will be Monday through Thursday, ten AM to nine PM, Friday and Saturday, ten AM to ten PM. And although the applicant doesn't have any definitive plans for Sunday, the proposed hours would be twelve, uh, PM to six PM. Uh, the next condition is that the, uh, exterior lighting will be brought up to, uh, the level of one, uh, foot candle. Um, next condition is that there will be armed security, but the applicant will confirm, um, that it would be allowed to use, uh, East Orange, uh, police officers for that purpose. Uh, no customers will have access to the upper floors. Employee parking, uh, the, uh, parking in the rear will be for employees and delivery purposes only. The applicant shall submit a copy of its lease showing the access, uh, easement to the adjacent lot. But in the event that that lot is, uh, sold at some point by the owner in the future, the applicant will return to the board for purposes of, uh, getting approval for alternative access to the site. And then finally, um, the sign will be revised to include numeric, the numeric street address of the property. That's what I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Huck. So commissioners, with that being said, from my board attorney, do I have a motion to approve case PBA dash eleven dash two four dash zero zero five zero with the, uh, mentioned conditions, um, from my board attorney?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonano for the motion and thank you, Commissioner Anyani, for the second. Real quick, before we get into roll call, cause I see, uh, councilwoman's hand up. Um, councilwoman, you have something to say?
Yes, um, is there going to be a condition for if, because we don't know what the landlord's intentions are and as, at this point, um, they only have access to the, uh, bottom unit. So is there going to be a condition that if the landlord decides that, you know, they can use their autonomy and rent out the other units that they come before the board with a revised security plan?
Uh, I, I think if that's acceptable to the applicant, that they come back with a revised plan to the board based on the, uh, that eventuality of, of the upper floors being rented out, um, we can make that a condition of approval, it's, if it's acceptable to the applicant.
Fair person?
Yes, it's acceptable.
Okay.
Chair, fair person?
Yes, sir.
I, I think it probably should be said on the record, if they do rent out to residential, they will no longer be in compliance with the cannabis ordinance. So I'm not, you know, if we need to put the condition in there, um, to, you know, as you said earlier, just to cover ourselves, great, but they will no longer be in compliance. So.
Yeah. Which is fair. So Mr. Huck, we'll add that condition?
Yes.
Okay, so commissioners, uh, with that revised condition, do I have a motion, uh, to accept to, to approve PBA dash eleven dash two four dash zero zero five zero? Um, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved again.
Thank you, Commissioner Gon, uh, thank you, vice chair for the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Anyani. Can I have roll call, please?
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I have a question for Mr. Hack. Um, we have two class three commissioners right now. I believe both cannot vote?
Yes, o- only one, uh, so, uh, yes, only one. We can't have two.
So it's either Commissioner Alway or Commissioner Tamika Garrett Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner, I can defer. I can, I can definitely defer and, and leave the vote. Uh, but I would say in terms of the testimony that was given, I'm not sure when, um, uh, uh, my, uh, my, my great esteemed colleague and, uh, council lady, uh, Councilwoman Garrett, I'm not sure when she got on and if she, um, heard the entirety of the testimony. Um, you know, if that, if that be the case, then I can defer and then, you know, but if not, then, um, I guess it would be, I don't know if it'd be suited since the entirety of the testimony was heard, to have that person vote.
My, my recollection is that, uh, Councilwoman Garrett Ward came in, uh, only maybe s- six to 10 minutes into the application, maybe?
Yeah, like around seven forty.
Cause I remember you indicated that, Mr. Chairman, so I think she heard most of it, I would think.
Yeah, but I would, I would defer to Councilman Alway, um, just because I know he was here throughout the whole case. So I think just to make it easier, uh, we'll, we'll take Councilman Alway's vote on this one.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much for the heads up, Janice. So with that said, can I have roll call, please?
Oh, um, uh, sorry, sorry, hello?
Yes.
I'm, I think, uh, and I'm correct before, um, uh, Brian, but it's, uh, do we have to, God, did we have to swear in, uh, uh, Councilman Alway or no? That, this is?
Yeah, I I mean, the conversation.
Right.
Did the clerk do it already or?
I, 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 you know, I understand, Mr. Commissioner Alway or Councilman Alway filling in for, uh, Councilwoman Garrett Ward when she's not here or vice versa. But because councilperson Garrett Ward is the sworn board member, her purposes of having Councilman Alway vote, he would have to be sworn in for this purpose, for this application.
For a while?
Does that hap- does that happen every, every, uh?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because she is the, the, you know, the sworn board member of class three, so.
Right, right.
That's fair. That's understandable.
Okay, so then I, I can defer.
Okay, that makes sense. And thank you, Alex, again for that heads up there. So without further ado now, uh, can we, we'll, uh, can I get roll call, please?
Commissioner, Anyani?
Yes. Commissioner Negron? Commissioner Negron, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned with the conditions. Uh, I'm going to vote no.
Commissioner Tamika Garrett Ward? Commissioner Garrett Ward? Commissioner Gonano?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Gonano is a yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kivutu?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
I'm abstaining.
And then we have, we have also Commissioner Hudson.
Commissioner Hudson?
How's everybody on these calls and they're not, um, answering? That's ridiculous.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes, um.
Hudson is a yes. Mr. Chairman?
All right, uh, what was the tally of the votes?
We have between four, five yes, one no.
Abstained.
There was also one abstained.
Yeah. Did, uh, you record the vote from Councilwoman Garrett Ward? I didn't hear it.
No, we didn't. She, she, uh, she, uh, dropped off.
So I just want to confirm the yeses were the chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Negron is a yes.
No, Commissioner Negron was no.
I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Negron is a no. Commissioner Anyani is a yes. Commissioner Gonano is a yes. Commissioner Hudson is a yes. Commissioner Kivutu is a yes.
Okay.
And Mayor was abstained.
Is abstained.
The mayor abstained, right.
Yeah, the mayor abstained.
Oh, the mayor abstained, okay.
Okay. So with that said, uh, case is approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate the board's time and efforts and consideration with this application.
Thank you. We appreciate your time as well.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You too as well.
Okay. Um, we'll let them drop off and we'll go to the next part of my application tonight, um, of our meeting tonight. Um, yes.
So, and I, I guess this is for Mr. Huck. Um, is it, so it, should I, with, uh, Councilwoman Garrett Ward being on, be, you, should I just stay on or should I drop off? I don't want to, you know, I don't want to, you know, have any, cause any issue.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think since, uh, the councilwoman is here, as much as we love to have you and your comments, uh, Councilman Alway, I think it might be the best thing.
Third today.
Very good.
Yeah, he came third today.
Okay. With that being said, then, um, Commissioner, with, uh, you know, with, uh, if you allow me to, I'm going to excuse myself, um, though I know Mr. Huck is going to miss me, it's okay.
We all missed you too.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
That's fair.
Good evening, everyone.
All right, take care.
Thank you.
You.
All right. So we'll go ahead to the next part of the agenda tonight, which is, uh, PBA dash zero eight dash zero zero three four. The applicant is Miriam A. Penafill and Jorge Penafill. Um, a, a property address is two sixty-five North Walnut Avenue, uh, council. Uh, I'll see. Uh, Miriam.
There's a council for this one. That's just, uh, uh, yeah, there's no board, there's no, um, attorney.
I think they're doing this pro se, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, I'll present to, I'll present to AIA. All right, not a problem. Um, so Danan. So with that said, do we have their AIA here? Cause I'm going to see Rafael Danan.
Hi, um, hi, good afternoon. Um, I am the owner, Marion Penafill for two sixty-five Norwalas Street and I am doing this pro se, so I am, I apologize in advance. Um, I'm not sure exactly what I needed. I thought we submitted everything, but I was, I not prepared for the meeting. Um, but I would like to try and see if this gets approved or, um, if you guys have any questions on the proposed project that we are, um, with, that we submitted. And with me is, um, Mr. Johnny Mina. He actually did the survey for the project and, um, he's here to kind of help me out a little bit, uh, answering any questions the board might have. Um, and thank you for having me in this opportunity.
Hello, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, uh, and I had a brief conversation with, uh, the board planner earlier this evening about this. This application requires several C variances and without any testimony in support of that, um, the proofs that are necessary for that um, may be difficult to consider this application. So what we can do is one of two things. We can start the testimony and see how it goes, but I suspect what's going to happen is that their applicant is, has to come back, would have to come back with a planner or someone that can put in those proofs. Uh, or we can just defer now. I, it's, I would leave it up to the applicant really, if they, and the board, if you want to start it. But I suspect we're not going to be able to reach a vote tonight because I don't think she, they're going to be able to put in the necessary proofs to get the variances approved.
So Ms. Mina, you understand, uh, what our board attorney is, uh, recommending? Or at least suggesting?
Um, yes. So will this mean that we, we have another chance to actually present everything and have a licensed planner with us for the board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, does this mean I have to go through the whole process of, uh, now, um, put it in the newspaper and letting all the, um, the neighbors about the meeting?
Well, let's, uh, figure this out right now. Um, Janice?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Regarding our, uh, meeting in May, um, how we're looking, how are we looking in regards of our agenda?
Well, it depends on how many cases gets through tonight. If anyone has to adjourn, then that would be first up for next month. We don't have any applications that are deemed ready yet for the May agenda.
Okay, so that's, if that's being said, uh, we could definitely put you in for May. And, um, Mr. Huck, if we were able to get them into May, they won't need to put it in the newspaper or anything like that, right?
No, uh, we, we can announce if, what's the date in May, Janice?
May four, May seventh.
Seven. So, uh, if, uh, it could be carried to May seventh with no, uh, notice necessary, um, tonight, we can do that to vote on it.
Um.
Would that be fine with you, Miriam?
Um, I just have, I, I think yes, but I just have a question. So I believe based on where I received the email from Mr. McLean, um, uh, we must provide testimony regarding the minimum lot depth and also the parking lot. I think that's what, what I was reading. That those two, um, things we need to testify on. That those two, um, things we need to testify on, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, so you have to testify this, a total of three variances, I mean, in, in my opinion, it would be, they would see two variances, uh, and, yeah, it just, and then, yes, in addition to those, um, proofs that you need to submit, um, you have, there have to be some testimony related to, you know, just clarifying, uh, the, the parking, um, based off of, um, the indicated plans, uh, for constructing the, uh, two-family home on the proposed lot. So how, how the parking would be provided for the existing, um, home, yeah.
But, uh, for that reason, I had Mr. John to help me out with that. So I'm not sure, uh, Mr. John, if he can step in and, and kinda explain that, and if that, if that is not enough, um, can we have an opportunity to appear again May seven? Will that be possible?
I mean, yeah, you could certainly, uh, you can have your professional speak, uh, on the project and, and testify. Um, and then again, you know, as, as the board attorney indicated, we can, you can have the planner come in and submit the proofs for the record, for the May seventh meeting.
Okay, um, Mr. John Mina, can you, um, please speak on the, the items that we need to provide testimony on, if you can, please?
So let's, let's swear him in first, um. Sir. See him, but, um.
So are we going ahead with this, uh, 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 um, Mr. Hock?
I, I think, I, I gave two choices, and I guess it sounds like the applicant wants to, take the first, which is start the application and then, see how sufficient that app, that testimony is in terms of the proofs that are necessary for the variances. And then if necessary, it could be carried for the next, then the May meeting for a planner to come in, support.
Yeah, but I, 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 I think that's, that's a waste of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, that's why I defer to the board, I, I, I think.
I'm totally against that.
I, I think you're right, Commissioner, I think it would be cleaner, easier, particularly since, it would be the fir- first application on, and right now you don't have any other applications ready to go in May. So it would give you, you know, this application affair and, and, and to the board, a fair opportunity to hear it all at one time.
Um, okay, um, I, I understand and I respect that, yes, um, I'll be okay with that then.
Okay. Um, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna put this into a motion, so it's formally addressed. So with that said, Commissioners, um, I'd like to make a motion, to carry PBA dash zero eight dash zero zero three four, to the next upcoming meeting, um, May seventh, with no notice attached. Um, what, and who made the?
That's, that's me, Commissioner, I made that, Chairman.
Thank you, big Commissioner Gron, do I have a second?
Second, Anyani.
Thank you, Commissioner Anyani, uh, can I have roll call, please?
Commissioner Negron?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrett Ward? Commissioner Anyani?
Yes.
Yes. Hudson, Commissioner Garrett Ward, yes, Commissioner Hudson. Commissioner Gonano.
Yes.
Commissioner Kivutu?
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Mister Chairman.
All right, thank you so much. So Miriam, so with that said, uh, we'll have you as the first, um, case in the May meeting. Um, so this way kinda gives you some time to get the planner that you need, um, for the case, and it'll be a lot cleaner, um, doing it this way.
Um, thank you, Mister Chairman, I really appreciate this, and I'm sorry, I wasn't planning, that this meeting was gonna go this way, I wasn't sure, um, but I appreciate, um, everything you guys stated and, can't wait for May seventh, thank you so much.
Nah, no problem.
Thank you and good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you. Commissioners, so we'll go to the last case of our night tonight, which is, uh, PBA dash zero one dash two five dash zero 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 four. The applicant is Upper Greenwood Realty LLC, property address is one thirty-three dash one thirty-seven and one thirty-nine North Fifteenth Street. Uh, counsel, Mr. Taylor. Thank you on mute, sir. Still on mute.
No, it's, uh. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good evening, um, Commissioners, good evening, Mister Mayor, good evening, um, counsel, um, and other persons present. My name is Robert Taylor and I'm the attorney for the applicant, Upper Greenwood Realty LLC. Uh, the principal of whom is Mister Said Boykin. Um, I have one, perhaps two witnesses today. This is an application in connection with one thirty-three dash one thirty-seven and one thirty-nine North Fifteenth Street Storage. Uh, the, it's block sixty-four, lot seven point oh two, seven point oh three, and eight. Um, what makes this, uh, this is an application for minus seven B. However, it's somewhat unique inasmuch as, uh, the, there, there's, there are two parcels at, at present. Technically, three parcels. Uh, the one thirty-three and one thirty-seven are currently two separate lots. And then there's lot one thirty-nine, one thirty-nine was a, was a twenty-two foot lot that was transferred to the applicant. Um, as an undersized lot to be merged with existing undeveloped lots, so that you would then have three, um, conforming developable lots. If it's approved, of course, by this board. So when you look at the drawings which we testified to, that is the survey drawings which we testified to, by the applicant's, um, surveyor, Mister Andrew Schmidt. He will explain to you how we will go from the existing lots and we will end up with three, developable conforming lots. Uh, if there are no questions of me regarding anything I've stated thus far, uh, Mister Chairman, I would like to call my first witness.
You can proceed.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Mister Schmidt, if you can raise your right hand, please. Uh, Mister Schmidt, do you, uh, swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you just repeat your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
It's Andrew Schmidt, S C H M I D T.
Thank you.
Hey, Mister Schmidt, Mister Andrew Schmidt, are you a licensed surveyor in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
And you're licensed in good standing at this time?
Yes, it is.
Um, very briefly, where did you receive your education or prepared you to, uh, pay the license, uh, as a surveyor?
I studied civil engineering, uh, undergradged civil engineering from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand, and after that, I forget the exact years, but I got my, um, BS in land surveying technology at New Jersey Institute of Technology. Roughly in around two thousand and seven, I finished.
Thank you. Have you provided testimony before East Orange Board of Adjustment or East Orange Planning Board prior to today?
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you, Mister Chairman. There are no further questions regarding the qualifications for Mister Schmidt. I would like to offer Mister Schmidt as an expert in the field of, uh, land surveying.
Not a problem, uh, Commissioners, any issues with Mister Schmidt and his, uh, credentials?
None here, sir.
All right, hearing none, you can proceed.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Okay, Mister Schmidt, I have here in front of me, well, what I'm gonna ask you to do, Mister Schmidt, can you share, your, um, survey drawings, uh, on your screen? Are you able to do that?
I should be able to.
Mister Taylor, if we can just mark this as an exhibit, then we'll call this A one, and if Mister Schmidt can just identify what it is and the date, and the number of pages.
Okay, so there, there are three pages and they're all dated March twenty-eighth, uh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mister Schmidt, I'm gonna ask you to go over with the board, uh, the drawings that have been marked as A one, uh, starting with the, the cover page, and explain to the board on what has been proposed by this applicant.
So, the applicant owns, these lots here on North Fifteenth Street, and the proposal is to consolidate those three lots into one lot. And then the next idea is to do a subdivision of those three lots to make, um, three conforming lots as opposed to two conforming and one non-conforming.
Now, when you say that they're gonna be consolidated, there will be no formal, there will be no point in time where we have consolidated lots. This is a, that's a pass-through consolidation in order to get to the three conforming lots, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you may proceed.
Okay, so. Can everyone see the screen? All right, so this shows lot seven point oh two with, uh, the frontage of forty-five point three one, they're all a hundred foot in depth. Lot seven point oh three has a forty-five foot of width, and then the non-conforming lot is tax lot eight, which has twenty-two point two one feet of width along North Fifteenth Street. So the idea is to turn them into, these lots here, two of thirty-five foot, and then one more of forty-two point five two feet, along North Fifteenth, uh, Street.
I'm sorry, wait.
No, no, I was just saying it's pretty straightforward.
Now, each of those three lots are conforming lots, inasmuch as they meet the development requirements for, let's say, one or two family structures here in the city of East Orange in that zone district, is that correct?
Correct.
And, and, I'm correct, the zone district is the Greenwood Redevelopment Zone District, District?
Correct.
Okay. And to the best of your knowledge, and I presume you do have such knowledge, the three lots are currently vacant, is that correct?
Right, they are vacant. The surveys are current, so you can see there's, you know, nothing, no, no structures built on any of the three lots right now. This structure is, is on the neighboring lot.
Okay, uh, okay, Mister, Smith, I, is there anything about those lots upon, the subdivision, if it's approved, that would render those lots, one or all of them, uh, as, non-developable?
No.
I have no further questions, Mister Chairman, this witness. Uh, as the board members have questions of Mister Schmidt, he's of course available to answer those questions.
Thank you so much, counsel, uh, Commissioners. Are there any questions for Mister Schmidt and his, uh, testimony tonight?
Not for me, Chairman.
Okay. Hearing none. Okay, hearing none, councils, you can proceed.
I have no further witnesses at this time, Mister Chairman.
All right, thank you so much. Um, so we'll start off with the public, if the public has anything to say, uh, we'll, give them that right, so, Ronan, if you can?
Um, at this time, we only have one attendee, um, if you would like to, make any comments or ask any questions at this time, please use the raised hand notification, I'll give it a moment. Okay, I'm not seeing any Chairman, I'll give it back to you now.
All right, thank you so much. Um, we'll go to our board consultants, um, Stephen, I'm not sure there's anything much for you, but you let me know.
I have nothing, Mister Chairman, pretty straightforward application, thank you.
Thank you so much, um, Alex.
Also nothing to say, it's, uh, yeah, pretty straightforward.
Appreciate it. All right, so with that said, council, uh, do you have a summation for this, or?
Mister Chairman, I did, as was indicated by both your experts, this is a pretty straightforward application. I don't think there's anything in particular that we can add to the testimony that's always been provided by the witnesses. So therefore, I would refer at this time to actually.
Thank you so much, council. Uh, Commissioners, are there any questions or comments before we put this into a vote?
Um, I have none, um, as the, our planners and our engineer and planner stated, straightforward, um, that place I'm very familiar with, uh, so, um, none here, sir.
Definitely appreciate that. All right, hearing none. So with that being said, no conditions needed. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve case PBA dash zero one dash two five dash zero 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 four, for approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
Uh, motion approved.
Thank you, Com- uh, Commissioner Gron, do I have a second?
Yeah, do a second too?
Thank you, Mister Chair, on the second. All right, can I get roll call, please?
Commissioner Garrett Ward. Commissioner Garrett Ward, yes, Commissioner Gron?
Yes.
Commissioner Anyani? Commissioner Hudson?
Yeah.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonano?
Yes.
Commissioner Kivutu?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Mister Chairman.
Thank you so much, Mister Taylor, uh, this case has been approved.
Okay.
Appreciate your time, thank you again, Mister Boykins, as always.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, Mary Queen. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, take care.
Have a great night, everybody.
You too, take care. Um, I'll let all those parties drop off before we go to the next part of the agenda. Okay, we have everybody we need here. All right, so with that being said, um, the next part of it, of our agenda, reports of officers, there are none. Um, communications and correspondence, so, um, we will have a special planning board meeting, which is scheduled for Wednesday, uh, April sixteenth, and it'll be at seven o'clock via Zoom. So just be aware for that upcoming meeting, and again, these are for the cases that we carried over for the applicant, which is the city of East Orange. And the next planning board regular meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May seventh, uh, seven PM via Zoom. So with that being said, all in favor for adjournment, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thought I would have heard more ayes than that, hearing any nays? No nays. All right, everybody, thank you again so much for your time.
Thank you, Chairman.
Again, we'll meet up again on April sixteen to finish up the other two applications for tonight, but, again, thank you again for your time, everybody, ta- take care.
Only bit, only bit.